Call this meeting to order. Please stand.
Lepidus to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Please let the record reflect that Mr. Tucker, Mr. Durnall, Mr. Demoss, and Mr. Kerr are present. Mrs. Jacobs is not present this evening. She had an illness in the family, so we pray that that resolves itself very quickly for her. So is there any visitors today? Comments? No? Okay. So move straight into the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the July 17th, 2023, regular board meeting, and of course, this is the August board meeting. We have financial. We have the treasurer's report for July of 2023. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gross wages on July 7th, 2023, for $51,000, $551,000. $206.38 for gross wages on July 21st, 2023, $532,553.71 for grand total for that is $1,083,739.59. For claims and prepaid from July the 1st through July 31st is $3,708,000. I'm sorry, let me start over again. $3,708,203.48. Claim vouchers for 8/21/2023, $517,361.59. Claim vouchers for 8/22/2023 is $893 for a grand total of $4,226,458.7 for grand total, I'm sorry, grand total of $5,310,197.66. Thank you.
Next, we have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves, and terminations that is C1 through 21, and personnel appointments and transfers, D1 through 60. And we got four annual renewal agreements. Dr. Sanders, would you?
Yes, just quickly to go over these annual, these are just agreements that we just every year have to renew. And those tonight on the consent agenda, first is Comp Patrol. That's the software we use for accounting. And the cost of that agreement is $24,185. Harmony. Harmony is a software we use for our student management, and the cost of that agreement is $13,790. And third is the renewal of our Lightspeed filter, which is our content filter. And it's, the cost of that agreement is $18,750. And then the last one is our annual class contract, class standing for connective learning, assure student success. And that's a professional development program, also character education type program that we use at Edgewood Primary School.
Is that correct?
I'm sorry. Thank you. $16,373.
Okay, thank you very much. Donations, we have one donation this month. There was $231.66 from Donors Choose for Mrs. Truax's classroom supplies. For you new teachers, you might want to check into Donors Choose because there's a lot of those that go through. And so some teachers are able to do some really neat things with that, the funds from them. So do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries for oh. And Dr. Sanders, are some of these you'd like to discuss?
Yes. First, I would just like to congratulate Katie Key. You met Katie last month, I think, sitting almost in the same seat. But Katie comes to us from Schwazwick Elementary School, where she was an instructional coach. She received her elementary education degree from IU, and her master's in building level administration from Ball State, and some other certifications. Katie has been doing an awesome job already, and we're thrilled to have her on our team. Also, I just wanted to mention, you might have seen a number of appointments for Coffee Corral. So we have several students who were approved tonight to help out in the Coffee Corral, the student-run business. And if you're at the football game Friday night, they had a table set up there, and very tasty drinks available. And I think they had a really good night. I don't know exactly what the dollar amount was, but yeah. So, yeah. And the other, just, the other group I just wanted to mention, you see a number of teacher mentors. So we assign a veteran teacher to teachers who are either new, brand-new, or new to RBB. And the purpose of that is to provide the teachers as a, with really a go-to person for a lot of those logistical things that you don't always think about, or different issues that pop up, questions they might have, support. And so it's, they, these are veteran teachers who have their own classrooms. And so we're very thankful for those who step up and serve as mentor teachers. And those stipends are paid for out of Title II.
Next is the assistant superintendent's report. So, Mr. Irwin.
Yes, you guys should have the cash flow over there. I'll let you get those out. Education fund, the revenue and expenses were pretty close. Expenses were a little bit higher. I had projections higher than what they came in, which is always a good thing. Last four months of the year, we'll move around a lot. We've got to shore up ADM. We'll have to go through negotiations. We'll look at staff pay. We'll do all those big things that come up the end of the year, so that number will continue to move around. But again, in great shape. Nothing to worry about there. Did make updates to it based on the Form 54. Been continuing to mess around with a little bit on the formula projections as far as, you know, if ADM comes in at this, if ADM comes in at that. So starting to look a little closer at that. I've also started working on the 2024 projections. That also helps me during the budget. So, and we'll talk about the budget in a little bit. So debt service, nothing, nothing to really report out there, other than, again, we made all of our scheduled debt payments in the month of July, so you'll see those. End of the month, where we ended was exactly where we thought we would be, was only off by about a thousand bucks. So that's a good thing. And then in the operations fund, things came in pretty close again as well. We've gotten to the point where we're kind of queuing in on where we're going to be on a lot of these pieces, so feeling really comfortable there. And then, again, just doing some of the same things with the operations funds that I talked about, the education fund. We've continued to show eating into some cash in the operations fund, but at this point, that's not something that I'm really worried about. So any questions on the cash flows?
Move on to the 2024 budget forms.
So this one, on the permission to advertise the 2024 budget, and then the forms would be the capital projects plan and the bus replacement plan. On the, on the budget, I put in the board packet just a copy of the Form 3, which is what gets advertised out on Gateway. That's what every school corporation in the state does. They have to advertise that Form 3. We'll put the capital projects plan, the bus replacement plan would go on the school website. It also gets posted to Gateway. I gave you some comparison numbers of last year's budget numbers as opposed to this year's budget numbers, just so that you could kind of see kind of what the difference was. Try to, again, you look at what that attributes to. Again, when we advertise, we set the ceiling of what our numbers are. We can always work budget numbers down, but once we advertise, we set that ceiling. So when you look at debt service, that number is inflated right now. So when we put in that anticipated debt payment, as we continue to work in going through the sale of those bonds and structuring the sale of those bonds, we'll work that number down. And when the DLGF looks at our budget, they'll place in that number of what our actual sale was on those bonds and what that payment is. That will replace the number that I put into Gateway, which inflates what it is that we have in our projections. The other thing that factors into that is the AV. I don't put in the true AV at this point. We put in, DLGF recommends that you put in 85% of the previous year's AV when you put that number in. And that's just to protect the school corporation. Again, so that we project high, we set that limit. That allows, that protects us as far as if there was a change in AV or some different things like that. That way, we can make sure that we take care of our debts when we need to make those payments. So we'll continue to whittle that stuff back. Operations fund is pretty straightforward. We are set by the, the levy is set by the MLGQ, which the legislature capped at 4% this year. We were eligible for the 9%, but again, they capped us, and so we're not able to take advantage of that increased MLGQ, even though we would have structured that within our total debt service rate. It got capped at the 4%. So that's all that I'm able to put on, on the Form 3. So that's what you'll see there on the Form 3. So again, we'd advertise. We'll go through the process of next month. We'd have that hearing, which is, again, is that the public's ability to come in and make public comment on the budget specifically. And then in October is when we have our adoption meeting, so that we actually adopt. And then I send off all the forms to the DLGF, and then we eventually get our 1782 notice. So things are looking good. We feel really good about hitting our, our total tax rate goal. Had another good conversation with Stiefel today about the sale of the bonds and making sure that we look at our strategy and to, to make sure that we land that plan where we want to land it. And again, just kind of following suit with that. We put that general property tax information info on the website, just so the community can look at what we're doing. And it's staying true to that plan and continuing down that road of managing that rate and then finding opportunities that if we feel like we can lower that total tax rate, that we will. And so that's what we continue to look at and have discussions on. So when you look at those numbers, hopefully, you, you've all been through this process a number of times, so you don't get too worked up as you see some of those percentages that are a little bit misleading. But we'll continue to work through it, and everything looks good.
Be conservative with the AV. This year's was a lot lower than it had been the last couple of years. So good to play it safe. So do we need to approve those forms tonight?
Yeah, give them that permission, give them the permission to advertise those forms on Gateway.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to permit the advertisement of the budget board.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries for oh. The next is the consideration to approve an updated Cintas agreement. By the way, Matt, you're going to be on the hook for quite a while here, so.
So Cintas agreement, Cintas is one of our partners that we use across the corporation. And so I actually have a really great relationship with the rep there. He works real closely with our custodial crew. And Arnold, he came to me a few weeks ago. They had just finalized a new contract with the state through the cooperative that will save us some money. So he brought that to my attention, and kudos to him for bringing that to us so that we can take advantage of those new pricings. It'll save us, kind of, I listed it there in the memo. It'll save us about $1,100 a year in uniform rental, about $900 a year on mops and mats, and about $8,000 a year in paper products, and then possibly some savings in trash as well. So definitely a good chunk of change there that we can, that we can take advantage of through that co-op agreement. And again, it's a four-year agreement, and then that's also been reviewed by Christine with Ferguson Law.
Have a motion.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Yeah. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's the approval of, or consideration to approve an adjunct teacher permit.
Yeah, so this one is for a familiar face. It's for Mick Hammett. So Mick is coming back to serve as a math teacher for us, as a retiree math teacher for us for the 23-24 school year. And so the adjunct route is a contract that, that's what we talked through the logistics and talked about that rehire, talked with Christine. It gives us that flexibility, gives Mick that flexibility, that one-year agreement. It stipulates out what it is that we pay, what, what benefits are available to him. And again, it works through this 23-24 school year. One thing that the state asks us to do is, the school board has to issue the permit. So I'll go through, once you guys, assuming you would approve the permit, submit that to the state. So that's part of this. So I recommend your approval.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval of the adjunct contract license for Mick Hammett.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
I can't imagine anybody being more qualified.
Right.
The term adjunct seems a little out of place with him, but that's fine. Our students are going to benefit.
Yes, very much.
As far as, I've got a quick question on that. Dr. Sanders, is it, so does the law say now you've got to wait 30 days before you can hire somebody as an adjunct professor? Is that right? Beyond your 30 days of last employment?
What's that? So his retirement date was June 30th, and the rehire date is here in August.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I can see this, this becoming more and more commonplace for possibly as teachers retire and possibly want to re-enter the workforce. So I'm glad we can do something like this.
Yeah.
So, kudos.
It helps us sometimes in those situations where we're transitioning
Right.
to a regular teacher's license most of the time. And so it just gives the school corporation some flexibility.
Right.
Approve the teacher permit from Mick Hammett. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve the IU Health Agreement for Athletic Training Services.
Yeah, so this is one that we've been working on for a little while. We have an agreement with Indiana University, which right now is providing us an athletic trainer. This is for PRN coverage. So with the changes in the program at IU, that's kind of changed the structure of what we need next year. We won't have an athletic trainer through Indiana University. It'll end up having to be through someone like IU Health. So they had changed some of the requirements of the program. What we still need this year is some coverage at some of the events that that athletic trainer can't get to. So that's what this, this contract covers, is that PRN coverage at athletic events that that one sole athletic trainer can't cover. What we're estimating right now is, costs us about $123 or so a night, because they're here for a few hours. And then probably, on the high side, five to seven events per season. So it's not a huge amount of money, but it definitely covers a need that we have in athletics. So next year, we'll have to come back, and we'll probably need to start to talk about an athletic trainer. But this helps gets us through this school year, and we'll continue that conversation with IU Health.
I'll move approval of the agreement with PRN Athletic Training Services.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments?
Just a question. You said five, seven events in each season. Are we talking about each sports season, or are we talking about fall, winter, and spring?
Probably like fall, winter, fall, winter. I think it'll be less than that. I talked to Mr. Bland, and right now, it's a mixture of junior high and high school events, right? So just kind of, he sat down, what can you cover, what can you not cover? It's probably going to be less than that to start, but I'd rather, again, estimate on the high side.
Sure.
But kind of talking about each, like, fall season, winter season, spring season, not individual sports. That's a good question.
And corporations paying this, not the athletic department, correct?
Yeah, they'd be paid through the operations fund.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we've got a series of projects. So for each project, we'll need to award the bid, and then in a separate vote, we would vote whether to approve the actual contract or not. So the first project is, the bid would be for the auxiliary building on 46, the HVAC project.
Okay. So you should have seen Creative Engineering Solutions, award letters that they are recommending for the three different projects. Do you want me to talk about all three, or you want to go through each individual?
You can go through all three if you want.
Yeah, so we had, we had bid opening on August 1st, followed all of those public opening, bid opening laws. We went through, they did bid tabulation, checked on all the required forms, and then we worked through that. So you'll see their, their award recommendations for three separate projects, one being the auxiliary building project, the, one being the elementary campus project, and then the high school project. So for the elementary campus and for the high school campus, their award recommendation is for Heflin. For the auxiliary building, their award recommendation is for HFI. Those, the, the people that bid on the projects were some of the major players in the area that we thought would probably be interested in our work, and that is who ended up bidding on the projects, all very well-known, reputable companies. So we feel really good about the, the type of people that we'll be working with as far as their expertise in that area.
Do you have the totals for each project?
Yep. So for the auxiliary building project, the contract total would be for $872,300. For the high school project, the total is $909,000. And for the elementary campus project, the total is $1,091,000.
All right. So we'll start with the auxiliary building HVAC project awarding the bid. So we have a motion to award that.
I move approval.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments?
I assume, I assume, Mr. Irwin, in number 11, HFI is the same as Heflin, correct, or not?
No.
Two different companies?
They're two different companies. That's right. HFI is Harold Fish Incorporated.
That's right. Okay.
And then Heflin is a separate company, yeah.
Okay. So all we're bidding, all we're approving right now is HFI, number 10, 11?
Yep. Yeah, we'll have to work through each individual
Okay.
because those are all individual projects.
We couldn't consolidate them.
Individual contracts as well.
Got it. Okay.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now, it would be to approve the HFI contract for the auxiliary building project. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract with HFI for the auxiliary building HVAC project.
Moved and seconded. Any questions on that one? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next would be to award the bid for the Edgewood High School HVAC project. And do we have a motion on that one?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now is to actually, to approve the Heflin contract for the high school HVAC project. That's for a motion.
Move approval for the Heflin contract.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments?
Hope that the character management runs through this week?
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Now is the Heflin contract, right, did I skip the, no, that was high school. So yeah, we're, need to award the bid for the primary school and intermediate school HVAC project. Do we have motion for that?
I move approval.
Yeah, a second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments on that one? I hear it was kind of warm in the primary school today, so hopefully this gets them past that. Okay. Nothing further. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, to approve the Heflin contract for the EPS, EIS HVAC project. Do we have a motion for that?
Move approval of the contract for the EPS, EIS, HVAC contract.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now there's consideration to amend policy 6320 and administrative guideline 6320. This would be the first reading, so it would be an informational item. And Mr. Irwin, you cover that for us.
Yep. So this is our procurement policy. It outlines the procurement guidelines that we have to follow as we make open market procurement of supplies and goods. So those markers right now, our current thresholds are anything over $10,000 requires board approval. Up to, we have to get at least three quotes, $50,000 to $150,000. We need three written quotes, and then that $150,000 mark is that public bid. What we're asking for is to amend the policy to align up directly with what State Board of Accounts has as far as what those threshold limits are. So at State Board of Accounts, right now, what they, they issue is that anything below $50,000 is up to local determination. So we set that, that threshold limit, and it, asking for it to be, to go to the State Board of Accounts limit, which is the $50,000. So it would bring us into alignment with what they have as far as what they check on when we come in and get audited. So it'll allow us to go out and make open market purchases for anything less than $50,000 without board approval. The one thing that does not change is that if it requires an agreement, it still comes to the board. The board is the only one that can enter into an agreement. So even if it's a purchase of $20,000 and it has an agreement with it and a contract and everything, we would still be bringing that to you. What this does for us is it brings us into alignment, like what we did with our capital assets threshold, some of those other things that in the past we've done some policy changes to. The other thing that it does is it speeds up, and it makes us more efficient with what we're doing. I know Arnold and Rick and Audrey and everybody around our office will be really excited about making this change. We tie up a lot of time, as we should, a lot of time, of going out and bidding things out and, and making sure that stuff's legit, but also slows down the speed of which we can get things done, because now we're waiting weeks upon weeks until we get to the next board meeting to get something done. So there's still checks and balances in place, which, again, is the reason that State Board of Accounts has outlined those thresholds, but it brings us into alignment. I checked with some different school corporations to see how they've started to handle this. Obviously, when you look at the board packet, we're constantly bringing things back to you, because so many things are over 10 grand now. And in a school corporation of our size and in our budget levels, it, it doesn't take a whole lot, quite frankly, sometimes to hit that threshold. And so sometimes you see us bringing things back to you that are like, okay, why are you bringing this back right now? But it's because we're still following that board policy. So again, that's what it is that we want to change. Some of the other school corporations, I've seen, when I reached out, some of the school corporations that there's as high as $150,000 that their board required approval. Some of them had it as low as $5,000. There was a lot of school corporations that are moving towards the $50,000, or they've already gotten to the $50,000 mark. And again, that's something that people are making adjustments to as things have changed. And you look at, prices have changed. We haven't changed that board approval threshold for a number of years. And so what we're asking for is, is that policy changed to get into alignment with State Board of Accounts, and to also allow us to be a little bit more effective with our operations of getting things done around the school corporation. It won't change that we're still going to say, hey, that price looks a little off. We want to go check out a second price. We do that all the time. But it allows us, once we feel like we're, we're in a great position to make a move and get something done, it allows us to act on that much quicker and get things done around here, which we all have a lot of things to do, and this just speeds our, up our ability to get to those things. So with that, I guess we're up for discussion if there's anything that we want to talk about.
This issue, we, not issue, but this topic has popped up through the last couple of years, especially several times, that we just never got around to doing it. I do think it's going to really help be able to run the administration of the school corporation by giving that authority to the
There's that period there is also about the same level.
Yeah.
To that level?
Mm-hmm.
It's sort of, for a time, I mean, for, yeah. Fifty, were we getting to make calls before?
Yeah, we still had to go out, yeah, we had to go out and, and go and get three bids, or try to get three bids if we could, yeah, depending on whether or not it was a single source. I mean, you get down into the weeds, right? Like, if it's a single source, it's a single source, I can only get one.
Right.
But if, you know, or I'm going to have to reach out, but I get somebody that's unresponsive, and I can't get that third, there's been times it goes that way. But a lot of times, yeah, we're bringing together those three, and then we're putting that through the board. And then when State Board of Accounts is coming through- And then when State Board of Accounts is coming through, they're going to come in and say, well, here's your board policy, let's see your, let's see your three. And so that's part of it as well. So it allows us, that allows us to go to what it is that they have determined through State Board of Accounts and through state procurement thresholds. It allows us to come in alignment with that. The other thing that is in there is did some update to terminology, which is the requirement to ask for written quotes at that 50 to 150 mark. You're asking for written quotes and not doing that by mail, but doing that by email. There's not a lot of businesses that are wanting you to send them a piece of mail to say, hey, bid on this. They're, you're typically corresponding with people electronically or by the phone. So it updates some of those things as well, just to kind of come up, up to date with the times.
And that will appear next month before a vote. And now it's consideration to approve bus routes. Mr. Irwin?
All right. So this is a yearly one. This was new last year. It's to, again, to follow some, some recommended guidance through DOE as far as the school board reviewing and approving our bus routes. Again, this is something that Audrey spends a ton of time on, and obviously was a huge part of your guys' board packet. There's a lot of pages in there. Again, it, she works through those to make sure that we're following the law, we're doing those right side pickups, we're trying to look at different routes and not trying to have kids on the bus too long and all of those things. So what it is, is it's following that recommendation, going through and saying, here are all our routes. You have questions on those routes? It outlined anything from start time, end time, distance, who's driving, all of those pieces, which we talked a little bit about earlier today on some of your questions. But it gives you some of that inside information that you might not always typically see. I think sometimes you look at it and it's a little overwhelming because she walks in, hands it in, says, here it is. And it's a, it's a thick old stack of paper, all the routes and everything like that. And I think it even shows boat tiers. We're a two-tiered system, meaning we have a secondary route, and then we have an elementary route in the afternoon. So it makes that double as long when you see all those route packets.
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Moving seconded. Any questions on this? I know that Audrey's done really well in doing our routes through the years.
That's what I compliment, the amount of, well, first of all, the number of pages that we had to look at.
It was 700 pages.
I haven't, I haven't memorized, no. But, but yeah, thanks to, hats off to her, all the work she put into that.
This one was, the board packet was exactly 700 pages.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Well, Matt, you're done.
I'm handing the baton off to Jerry now.
All right. Now, it's consideration to approve the Marzano Resources Agreement. Dr. Sanders?
So our corporation has been involved with professional learning communities for some time now. And a couple of years ago, we all took basically a refresher course to get all, everybody on the same page, veteran teachers, new teachers. And we're getting to the point now where the PLCs are really starting to operate well. We no longer need the coaching that we received from Solution Tree. And so the next natural step is to move into taking what we're already doing through our PLCs with curriculum, instruction, assessment, and taking all of that work and put it into a, a structure, which is something that Dr. Marzano created called the High Reli, High Reli, uh, High Reliability Schools Framework. Tongue twister there. HRS, I'll just do HRS from now on. So this is not a new initiative. This is just the PLCs taking that work to the, the next level. And what's going to be great about this is I've been in education long enough to, to know that sometimes we get all fired up, fired up about an initiative, and we get some curriculum maps going, create some assessments, and then after the years go by, those seem to fade away. We have new people coming in, new administrators coming in, and it seems like we're always starting over again. And so this framework will enable us as new folks come into the school corporation, that it will provide them with a roadmap of what we're doing here in our Edgewood schools. And also will help teachers, principals to, to realize that we're all, we are all on the same page in terms of these major initiatives. So this agreement tonight will cover Level One. There are five levels as part of the HRS framework. And this survey will provide a survey that we will be able to send out to our school staff, and then analysis of the survey results, coaching on what the, the results have to say to us. And then we'll have a High Reliability Schools coach who will help us through this whole process. And we're expecting this Level One to take closer to two years, could be a little bit less. The cost of this agreement for Level One is $61,700, and we'll be taking that out of Title II and Medicaid funds. And we've also written another grant that we submitted last week that if that is approved, then it will cover the total cost of this effort. I have Jennifer Barrett and Jennifer Anderson here. I'd like to have them come up and see if they have anything else they'd like to add or answer any of your questions.
Hello. Let's start with questions. Do you guys have any questions for us about Marzano and the process? We're hoping to start with them.
Thanks for explaining it all to me last week. I appreciate that.
Sure, sure.
So the first...
It's confusing.
The first level is, is go is two years?
We're anticipating.
So we're looking at a 10-year, if there's five levels, are we looking at 10 full years?
Hoping not.
Okay. I didn't know if each level got a little bit with the learning curve.
Yeah.
Not necessarily. As you're going through Level One, you will still be working on elements of Level Two. That's just a natural part of it. But the, the full certification process for Level One, we anticipate taking about two years.
And each school will move forward.
Yes.
Based on their own individual needs. So it's not like we have to move forward, forward as a school corporation. Each school will move forward as it naturally fits their needs and what they need to accomplish.
I think too, we're not trying to push that timeline.
Yes.
We don't want to put too much out there. We don't want to cause a, a panic in terms of this is something new because it's truly not. And so we don't want to, you know, create that panic within the buildings, that this is something that everybody just needs to, you know, get on board overnight, you have a ton of work to do, it's, you know, it's, it's due by the end of the month sort of thing. Because that's not this process. This process is time-consuming because we're going to take our time and we're going to do it well. And that's, that's the piece of it. That's the beauty of it, is that we don't have like a STEM certification, a certain amount of time that everything has to be submitted by. And there may be one school that has less pieces to put together in the puzzle than another school does. And so when we say a two-year timeline, we may be really surprised that in a year, we may be coming back to you and celebrating that a couple of our buildings have, you know, received certification for Level One, and then we're ready to move to Level Two. So like Jen said, Level Two is looking at our instruction. Obviously, we're not going to stop building what we're doing with our instruction. We're not going to stop professional development. We're not going to stop teaching and building teachers' toolboxes along the way. But as we're doing that, our main focus is going to be through that curriculum, or excuse me, through that climate and culture piece. Same way curriculum guides themselves, all of those pieces that come in Level Three. We've spent a huge amount of time through PLCs building those. And so a lot of what we're doing, we already have a foundation for, but we need to go back and we need to evaluate that foundation. We need to find those shaky pieces so that we can really start to build up from that. And so it'll just take time. And really, we all know that culture and climate is probably going to be the hardest piece because that's about our people, that's about mindset, that's about how we approach educating kids. And sometimes that's the hardest thing. It's not about the doing, it's about how we approach it and how we're doing it.
Well, like, Fred, I appreciate you taking the time to talk to me about the, the process. And I expressed at the time that I'm interested in seeing how the different buildings move forward. And I think my experience was that there was always a lot of research and a lot of support at the K to eight level. And then when we got into the second, the high school level, it was harder to find those really effective ways of moving forward. So I think that presents a challenge, and I'll be very interested to see how that progresses.
Us too. We're going to be, you know, diving into this right along with everybody else. And so we're excited to get the first surveys out and really start to dig into that information we'll get back. We'll be honest, we have no idea. That's going to be kind of the surprise that we're going to be unwrapping. And, you know, as I've said multiple times, not only to, to our staff, but our admin, knowing where our weaknesses are do not make us weak. Knowing where our weakness are, weaknesses are just allow us to grow stronger so that we can address those. If we don't know anything, then we don't, we don't know to do any better. So I'm really looking forward to getting those pieces back, celebrating the positives, and then really looking at where do we have work to do. So it'll be a good evaluation of our systems in general.
As we mentioned in the lunch meeting, I had taught business law for over 10 years at Ivy Tech, and we always talked about the decision-making process, and that the very last item is to reevaluate what you did, you know, to review it. And I told every class that that's where people drop off and don't do that. You know, they just do it, they don't look back to see how they could tweak it to make it better, or maybe they just need to get rid of it. Whatever the case may be, you've got to look at it, reevaluate it from time to time.
Absolutely.
And conditions change as well, so.
Yeah.
I think that's one of the strongest pieces.
I like that part of it.
Exactly. That's the, one of the absolute strongest pieces is that continual progress and monitoring and changing and adapting your needs for where you are presently. And that's, that's what I'm excited about.
Yeah.
Is that monitoring piece and saying, okay, what can we take on next? And what can we help improve, so.
At our corporation-wide meeting that we had, the first day the teachers were back, the presenters that day were actually myself, Matt, Jennifer Anderson, and Jennifer Barrett. And our intent that day was to, we really wanted to let the teachers know that the ways that we are here to serve them, to help them to be better teachers, to help them in many different ways. And I think this HRS will definitely help us to do that. I went to Marzano Conference this summer with Matt and Jennifer Anderson, and they had a number of sessions on teacher wellness. Well, I was, really thought this was all about teaching and learning. And so I wasn't really understanding the tie-in with the teacher wellness until the last presenter. And, and it really, that really touched my heart to, to be at that session. And, you know, we want teachers who are fresh. It's a very stressful job. Life is stressful sometimes. And we want to, to do a lot, all that we can to support our teachers. And, and I think this is going to help us to, to provide some of that support.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'd move approval.
A second.
Moving seconded. Any other questions or comments? One comment I will make before I don't forget is, some years back, when PLCs were just starting, I went as a board member to Phoenix to a conference. And that was very exciting, not only because of what I had learned from the conference, but the discussions at dinner, that everybody was just so excited about this and that. And it, it was just really neat experience. So if any board members, you know, want to go to one of those, I'd recommend it. I'm going to try to go to one anyway, so.
Well, another thing on this too, this, Robert Marzano's been around a long time.
Absolutely. The research is well-established.
We're not, we're not taking some 30-year-old program because it keeps getting, he keeps tweaking it, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Because everything that I read, it's, it's the same thing as Mr. Yules learned when he got his teaching degrees, just reinforcing.
Yep.
Just reminding him what he learned, correct?
You're exactly right.
Okay.
That's exactly what we're doing. That research is still very viable, even in today's classrooms. It doesn't mean that we don't bring in the other pieces with STEM integration and all of that, but at the core of everything that we do, it's still solid instruction. And so that's the piece that we have to continue to come back to time and time again. And Bob Marzano leads the field in that.
Right.
When we're talking about the art and science of teaching, you know, there isn't a single teacher out there, you know, that graduates from college and has not picked up that book. So like you said, it, that, that research goes far back.
Right.
Yeah.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Even though your spotlight's gone, you're still on the hook here.
I'm getting back.
Next is consideration to approve EEECC's staff handbook.
Yes, so under the direction of Heather Kinzick, the Edgewood Early Childhood Center continues to work through the different levels of accreditation. They're Level Three, they're doing work to move towards Level Four. And one of the requirements for accreditation is through the National Association for the Education of Young Children, it requires that policies are clearly communicated to staff. And so Heather's worked on taking the corporation handbook and adding pieces of it that, that will apply more to the preschool and put together the staff handbook. Heather is here tonight. If you have any questions for her.
Do we have a motion?
Move approval of the EEECC staff handbook?
A second.
Moving seconded. Any questions?
I just have one question. We had a debate on this today, that, the acronym, what's it stand for? In a...
Education of Education of Young Children.
For sure. Is that right? Okay, all right. I think that's what you said. It was close, it was close, it was close, okay. I had no idea either.
National Association.
Okay, I know. So this is, this is a requirement, though, I assumed, for the accreditation?
Yes. So the, for the accreditation, we have to put together a portfolio that demonstrates how we're meeting all of these requirements. So showing how our policies are, what our policies are and how they're communicated and set up.
Right, yeah. Nice job with that.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we have the superintendence report. Dr. Sanders?
Yes. Now, this might sign, sound a little egotistical, but I think this is one of the best superintendence reports that we've had in a long time. Not necessarily because of the person delivering, but because what we're talking about here. Pretty exciting stuff. So the first exciting piece is, we're finally getting to the point where we're taking the different pieces of the puzzle that we've been working on for the last several years and putting it all together. Our finances, we've talked about that a number of times, how we've worked hard to, for the model of doing business better. And that's really paid off for us. Our school corporation has never been in a better financial estate. Mental health, we've talked about that over the last several years, how we've, we started out with the Lilly Grant and just, we just haven't stopped since. And thanks to the two major grants that Jennifer Anderson has written, that's really going well. School safety, that's something too, that is just regular part of, of what we do here at Edgewood. We have our school safety team that meets on a monthly basis. Every principal, principal's meeting starts with a discussion on school safety.
Every principal, principal's meeting starts with a discussion on school safety and table talk exercises. And the last piece of the puzzle that, that we're really, are going to focus on more than ever, and it's as important as any of the others, and that's on curriculum and instruction. And that's why we took the Ready Schools position and expanded that position and added more of a focus on teaching and learning, in addition to Ready Schools. So I'm gonna ask Jennifer Barrett to come up, and she's going to talk a little bit about what she's going to be doing this year in the areas of teaching, learning, and Ready Schools.
Absolutely.
And she has a big announcement too, on the...
I do have a big announcement.
ROI.
Yes, I do. So, I have been a busy lady over this past month, and, you know, I go home at night and I tell my husband, he says, "How's your day been?" And I just kinda shake my head 'cause I'm not entirely sure how to answer that question. You know, I've told people in the last week, when they've asked me that, I've said, "You know, I really love this." I said, "But if you would've asked me a week ago, I would've told you, I really don't know." And I, I'm very honest in that response because what I've been building over the past month is an even bigger picture perspective than what I had of a building of six hundred kids. And my vision was, in comparison to what I have now, tunnel vision for those intermediate kids in grades three, four, and five. And I'd eke up a little bit into sixth grade just to make sure our fifth grade was in alignment, and I'd eke down into second grade and bug Brenda down there to make sure that we were in alignment. But what I found and what I've been digging into over the last several weeks is, what do things look like across our district? And, man oh man, it's been a lot of fun to dig into. And I'm finding, you know, that as I, I get into this, that teachers are wonderful about asking me into their classrooms. They're great about letting me come into their, their PLCs, and I'm learning a ton from them. And what I'm seeing as I'm getting into these different grade levels and as I'm working with the administrators and talking with them and asking them what they need, what I'm finding is that my job in this position is gonna get even more fun. And one of the things that I've learned over the last few weeks is that our Ready Schools initiative has not necessarily always translated over into what we're doing day in and day out in the classrooms. And that is not to say that our Ready Schools initiative is not fantastic. It's not to say that what we have done and what we have built over these last several years is not incredible. But when you ask a teacher what Ready Schools is, and they can't really define it, I'm realizing that, man oh man, we, we have some work to do. And so these last few weeks, I've been, Dr. Sanders will tell you, I have been puzzling over this. I mean, just absolutely taking it home at night, wrestling with it. And I came to him and I said, "I think the piece that we're missing is that it's not just about maker spaces. It's not just about project-based learning. It's not just about innovative, you know, instructional methods. It's also about that first-grade teacher that's teaching that first grader sight words. It's about that third-grade teacher who has a kiddo that's not at grade level yet and is working with Orton Gillingham as an intervention. It's about that sixth-grade math teacher who is making sure that those students have those introductory skills to pre-algebra so that one day they can pass Algebra One when they get to high school." And so the more that I've been digging into this and the more that I've been kind of running ideas past people, the more I'm realizing that Ready Schools, you know, is this silo that we have built. But there are so many other pieces of this. And so we've been talking a lot over the last couple of weeks, and Brenda's gonna ask me to come into, into EPS, and she's actually the one who started my brain on this, as far as, "How am I gonna talk to these kindergarten, first and second grade teachers and help them understand that what they're doing with these five, six, and seven-year-olds is building these kids that are coming to us for internships? They're building these kids that are getting into our ILC and they're designing, you know, careers in engineering and AV and all of these amazing things." And so I started to think about this term in terms of Edgewood-ready. And what does it mean to be Edgewood-ready? And we've talked a lot with the math team that we worked with over the last year as far as building that Edgewood graduate. And it started to make me think that building this Edgewood graduate out isn't just about the Ready Skills Initiative. It's not just about our graduate profile. It truly is everything that our teachers do, day in and day out. So I've been working with the STEAM coaches, instructional coaches, Ready Schools coaches, they've had a lot of names over the years. And we're really going to work on building that broader perspective in terms of how we approach an Edgewood-ready third grader, or seventh grader, or what that looks like so that we can say to not only our teachers, helping to build what Edgewood-ready means, but we can also say it to our community and we can show it to our parents. And so that's a piece that we're gonna be working on a little bit. I showed a visual today that's been kinda going in my mind since a run on Friday night, and I think I'm starting to kinda wrestle with it a little bit less. But I, the feedback that I'm gonna get from the teachers is what's gonna guide so much of what we do at this point. And so, I guess really to say that teaching, learning, and Ready Schools are not separate pieces. In my mind, they can't be and they shouldn't be. And so I'm going to be really working hard on not building those in silos, but truly building those pieces together. And so, I don't know a hundred percent what that's gonna look like just yet. And I think that's the exciting part about it, is that the teachers are gonna guide all of that work in terms of what it does look like and what it sounds like when we talk to our community members about that. So, what kind of questions do you have? I know that that's very broad, and I feel like it's, you're, you're probably getting the sense of how much I've kind of tangled with this over the last few weeks. And I probably will come back to you in six months, and I may not be any more clear than I am right now.
If you haven't gone on a trip and, and you've never been down that road before, it's a little stressful. You're just not sure where you're going, if you're on the right path. And what Jennifer is going to do is make those connections so the teachers don't think that they got, they have fifteen different things they, that they have to do.
Yep.
They can see how it's all going to connect.
Yep.
And, and so that will reduce the stress right there. And, and I think that's what Jennifer's gonna work with our teachers and our PLCs and instructional coaches and our administrators. And she's, I just love hearing her talk about curriculum. She knows what we're, what she's talking about. We went up to a teacher evaluation training last week, and Jennifer was driving, but she was also talking about curriculum. And Matt Wooden was in the back, and Jennifer apologized at one point and said, "I'm sorry for taking up the, the car and leading, taking up the discussion." And Matt said, "Well," he goes, "That's all right, 'cause I just feel like I've been listening to a really interesting podcast all the way up." And, so.
I don't know if that's good or bad, but I hope it was good. So, last announcement, Dr. Sanders said, you know, we have a big announcement to make, and this is a, something I'm excited about. I honestly had nothing to do with, but I get to celebrate it right along with the district and our awesome Ready Schools team. ROI Regional Opportunities Initiative, you guys are very familiar with them. We went through our Ready Schools grant, and we just wrapped that up. We're spending the last few thousand dollars there. They called last week and set up a meeting, and I thought it was really just kinda to check in on how in the world am I handling all of this? And she shared with us that ROI believes in our student-run businesses, that we really need that last push, or I should say maybe that seed money, to get them up off the ground. And we were one of a handful of schools that received grants for our digital fabrication labs from ROI. They were not anything that we applied for, it was not anything that we were expecting. I would say in some ways it was a prayer that was answered, as I was trying to figure out how in the world we were gonna do this. And each one of our labs, Ed Shop and ILC Designs received twenty-eight thousand dollars from ROI to get us up off the ground. They believe in what we have started, and we really are not a fully operational student-run business yet. But I truly believe with the seed money that we are not only going to make this operational sooner than later, but I think it's gonna be a huge success for our school and our community. So we're really excited to spend that money and get things up off the ground. You're gonna see some additional pieces, hopefully here in the next few weeks, that we're gonna be rolling out. So I'm excited about that. And now I just need kids, Mr. Ackerman, I need kids. So, so yeah, great, great things to celebrate there.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Absolutely.
Two more items on my report. Wednesday's gonna be a big day here at Edgewood. We've, over the last few years, with our Ready Schools initiative, we've met, had several meetings with local businesses, taking them on tours sometimes, having students and teachers talk to them. And we're to the point now where we wanted to kinda go back and visit with them again. But we didn't wanna go and meet with them individually, and so we came up with the idea of putting together a business leaders advisory team. And they're going to come here on campus, we're gonna meet in ILC for a luncheon meeting on Wednesday. And we're going to continue to use that opportunity to share any updates that we have with our Ready Schools initiatives. We wanna continue to ask them questions about what they look for in employees so that that will inform our graduate profile and all the work that Jennifer's gonna be doing with teaching and learning. But I've got a greater vision for that team. And when they come here on Wednesday, I'm going to try to challenge them and inspire them to think outside of the box, to really brainstorm and make history in terms of developing some innovative ways that businesses and schools can work together. I'm not sure where we're going to go with this. We're going to meet twice a year. And we're just gonna begin that discussion and start creating some ideas and, and just, these are some very important people that have a lot of experience. And some of the people that were, I was gonna read off some of the people who are going to be coming to our campus on Wednesday. Nick Schaefer with German American Bank, Johnny Lindsay with People State Bank, Paul Quick and Colin McCarty with Smithville, Jean Baker, Dan Peterson with Cook, Kenny Burge, who runs the Ellisville Cook Plant, Russ Wilkie with Hoosier Hills, Andy Lehman with Dimension Mill, Robert Templeton from Crane, Clark Granier, and Jennifer Pearl from the Bloomington Economic Development Commission, Katie Sensabaugh with Success School, and Senator Shelley Yoder is also on the team. She has some business in Indianapolis this Wednesday, but she's agreed to be part of that team. So you think about all the experience that those folks have, and they're coming to our campus, and they're going to hopefully come up with this really innovative way so that we could make sure that all of our Edgewood graduates are ready to have the greatest impact possible on the business world and the community. So that's this Wednesday, August 23rd, 11:30 until 1 o'clock. And then finally, hopefully, you've been seeing some of the advertisement that we've put out for our Celebrate Edgewood Showcase. That's gonna be September 7th from 5:30 until 8:30 PM. And the whole idea about this is to show off to our parents, grandparents, community members, the great programs and the excellent facilities that are available to Edgewood students. Sometimes as a parent, I did this too, when I would go to an open house, I would go to the open house, and I'd just visit the school where my kids were, were attending. We really want, we want, for example, our elementary, our preschool parents to be coming up and seeing what they're doing at the junior high, what they're doing at the high school with the Innovative Learning Center and the coffee shop. We want the community to see our tremendous band, state championship band program and our show choirs. We'll also have some athletic events that night, it's OV week. So we'll be playing that night, we'll be playing OV and volleyball and girls soccer. We're gonna have some food trucks here, some bounce houses, and I'm negotiating with the Indiana Pacers to bring Boomer down here. So we're trying to see if Boomer's, apparently he must have a tight schedule because it's taken them a couple days to get back to me on that. But, so we're really excited about that. On the back of my report, I always like to keep this one page, I cheated tonight in two ways. I cheated by having Jennifer come up and talk, and also back page to the report. So, I hope the school board members could come and be part of that. And we want our teachers to be there. Teachers, what we're, what we're really looking for, I start talking too fast, I get too excited. But what we're looking for in terms of our teachers, we'll need some volunteers here and there, but we want our teachers to come out with their families too, and enjoy the night. They don't have, we're not gonna open up all the classrooms, so, you know, if teachers can come with their, their children and spouses and, and just enjoy celebrating Edgewood. It's all about having a fun night, and so we hope we have a big crowd. Oh, Vicky, coffee would, would be upset if I didn't mention this, but we have our Health Wellness Fair that night too, that will be in the multipurpose room at the junior high. So the last thing I want to announce, and it's not on my report, but starting with our September school board meetings, our school board meetings will now be livestreamed. And so that'll start in September, they'll still be archived if anybody misses it, and we'll try to get the word out that they, the community can start watching our board meetings live, so. I think that's it.
Thank you very much. Move on to RBB EAS comments, we've got Mr. Yules here this evening. Andy Zabel, sorry.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry I couldn't make it July, make it most of these, and I'm still always, I don't know why I am surprised, or just it's amazing how much is going on. Unless you maybe come to these, you don't realize it, but it's always good to hear all these projects and all these things. First thing I wanna do is welcome and introduce our new co-president of the association, Brandy Abel, first-grade teacher down at EPS. She came along for the ride tonight. Familiar faces, new faces. I can only speak for the high school, but I think it's Matt Kito, is that right? And Justin Barger, some old alums have come back to help us out, that's always neat to see. Also some new faces, I think Katie Key, and he's given us permission to mess his name up, Mr. Renshler? Heard good things about a smooth start there. Funny thing, Katie Key, I think, responded to an email I apparently accidentally sent to all of EIS this morning. Gone the last couple weekends of just sending something to our members, just something for the week and just a thought, and she was nice enough to reply today, so that was very nice. Along with that, Andy Shoal as well, so I realized, oh, I just sent it to the whole staff, but that was fine as well. It's always good to see those faces, and welcome aboard as well. Also kinda tied into your teacher wellness thought today, you know, I was telling the teachers that, 'cause last week I was tired, that was the first full week, and I'm not getting any younger, but it's always fun, and by the time 2:30 hits for us, I'm like, I'm done. And I just said, your list is never gonna get done, the inbox is never empty, so just remember that, and just make sure you have some balance, and then, so your teacher wellness comment made me think of that, and that was what I sent to them. Big thing, appreciate adopting a new math curriculum. We are in this year, and we've had some hiccups, and that's technology sometimes, but we're looking forward to getting started and getting unified, it's much needed. And obviously I'm gonna be part of that process as part of the math department. Appreciate Jen for stopping by as well this morning and getting things going, and also Mr. Ackerman for giving us some time. I think it's gonna be much needed, it's just something, as we get this start, we need to start it right, and so I'm excited by it, having some unified things to talk to start it right, and so, I'm excited by it, having some unified things to talk about and to work from. And, but you guys approved it, so appreciate that. And all of Rick's help as well, I'm sure you've had a few phone calls, and a lot of our stuff that we can't do, we just say, "Hey, this needs fixed," or "We need help." So, we do appreciate it, 'cause I get the calls, and then I'm gonna send them to you guys, but it's much appreciated. So, we're off and running with that, appreciate all that. And before you know it, it's gonna be bargaining time by the time we meet next time, and we'll look for a productive session with admin. So, that is it this evening.
First of all, thank you, Doug. I forgot to mention, we'll be giving out prizes for families who come and visit multiple locations across the campus, and our students will be making a lot of these prizes. And this was made in our Innovative Learning Center today, it's a keychain, I'm gonna pass it down, and it looks like it's, could've been purchased at the store today, so...
Nice, alright, that's awesome. Okay, now we're to board member comments, I'll start with Mr. Tucker.
Glad it goes off to a great start. And thanks to all the teachers and staff, and don't know if they get thanked enough, but thanks to the bus drivers and support staff. I've seen the bus drivers buzzing up and down the road. I got Dr. Sanders' call that first day, said there was a delay getting home, but err on the side of safety, so I thought that was awesome. So, hats off to them. Congrats to all the folks honoring this evening, thanks for the donation. I see the big-screen TVs all around the room, so I'm sure Mr. Routen was involved with that somehow, so thank you for that. I assume that's where the live screen's coming from. I just need the clicker for the next board meeting. And I just wanna talk, just say, make one more comment about the village. And this picture right here was pretty cool, on the board packet. At the football game last week, it was, I'm just glad they didn't serve Mountain Dew at the concession stands, 'cause kids are wound up. So, but it was cool that they honored these girls that were state competitors last year in track, and the softball team that won the sectional. And I thought, hats off to Mr. Bland for recognizing those things and bringing them back, and wish them well. And it's good to see the Mustangs win their first game of the year, and also, it's awesome to see the marching band out there as well, so have a great year.
Mr. Gallow.
Do you know what Brad was talking about? And congratulations to the Ready Schools team for the grant, that's a terrific surprise. I wanna, going along with what you're saying about Jerry, I appreciate the coaches and the A.D.s taking care of our athletes, making sure that they weren't overheating today, and had some events that were canceled, but I know that they're just doing what's best for our students. Personnel, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Elizabeth Smith. She served as a teacher's aide for years and years and years, and she was always such a wonderful and good-hearted supporter for our students. And it's great to see Matt Kito and Justin Barker back in the fold, seeing Mac Hamill go back in the classrooms, just heartwarming.
He has still had his shot ready for the first day.
It's a little bit of, it shook me up a little bit, you talked about getting a little older. We approved Amy Norris as a mentor, I was Amy Norris' mentor, so that was a little bit of a gray hair moment. I did notice there, the week before school, that there were 48 cars in front of and behind the intermediate and the primary, of teachers getting ready, getting in there, and I just appreciate and respect their professionalism, their devotion. I came in for the first day, got to meet some new folks, it's kinda scary how many new faces I didn't recognize, but the positive energy and the fresh faces and the veteran leadership, it was just so wonderful. I am looking forward to Wednesday's luncheon, and it's exciting, and the uncertainty is part of it. Anytime you try something new, anytime you're setting out on a journey, as you say, there's gonna be uncertainty, but that's where the success will come from. And I'm also looking forward to the showcase on the 7th, so, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I decided on the football victory, that was a great, great victory, no doubt, but I really inspired by the fact that there's 30 freshmen that they had out. That's a building, great building project, but, you know, I wanna thank, I just, I loved all the excitement tonight. Everybody seemed excited, you know, about the double Jennifers, that was great, you know, I love how you do that, but, you know, just, thank you all for being here, and just thank you for being the type of people that you are. I just, I'm amazed at the things you go through to teach, I'm amazed how you're told what to teach, but yet you move into other things, it's just, it's just great. I love you guys, what a great system we've got, so, alright.
Boy, now what am I supposed to, what's left?
Say something bad.
Say something bad. I can't think of anything. I think things are going well, I think everybody, I think the school year got off to a great start. I see a lot of excitement around the entire campus, and all the teachers and students that I've talked to are just so happy to be back in school and be together, and I'm really excited about where we're headed with being Edgewood-ready. I think that's awesome. Are we gonna call it Edgewood-ready from now on, instead of Ready Schools, or?
Well, we are working on that right now.
I like that.
Jennifer and I have had a conversation that we like the Edgewood-ready, maybe speaks a little bit better, so we're making that transition.
Yeah, I like that. Thanks for everybody coming this evening, really appreciate you guys, and we thank the cats and coming out and taking care of us, and going live next board meeting, so that's gonna be cool. So, you can all tune in. So, have a wonderful evening, and this meeting's adjourned.